Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person, to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin tonight's special meeting with one closed session item, item number one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Now, before we convene to closed session, city clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have not received any requests to speak on the closed session item.
All right, well then I will close public comment and we will convene to closed session in conference room B. plan framework. Jennifer Chen, our economic development manager, will be leading us through it. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As mentioned, I am Jennifer Chen, the city's economic development manager. Tonight, we are here to review the framework and key components of a comprehensive economic development work plan. Following staff's presentation, I'd like to ask for your input on the following questions. Does the city council support the focus area that will shape the work plan as described in the city council report? Are there other areas of focus that the city council would like to consider for inclusion in the work plan? Okay, sorry about that. Again, the two questions that council, I would like the council to respond to would be, does the city council support the focus area that will shape the work plan as described in the city council report? And are there other areas of focus that the city council would like to consider for inclusion in the work plan? As you know, the city is currently experiencing a 10.5 million general fund budget deficit. The reasons for deficit are changes in the national shift of the economic landscape, like remote work impacting things like dry cleaners, restaurants, and business travel, loss of our vehicle license fee due to the state withholding of the local fees to offset the state budget shortfalls, and then the recent loss of the Marriott Hotel closure, creating a loss, a large loss of the local sales tax revenue. To tackle these issues, staff is preparing a comprehensive economic development plan to help meet the following objectives: diversification of the tax base, attracting and retaining businesses, supporting sustainable economic growth. I want to mention here that the ED work plan is not a magic bullet that will solve the city's, all the city's revenue issues. It's part of many efforts the city is undertaking to sustain services and ensure long-term financial solvency. If approved, the resulting economic development work plan will support small business, build relationships with new and existing businesses, enhance the economic vitality in the business district citywide, and stay abreast of local, state, and national real estate trends. The proposed framework has nine components, generally categorized into analysis, implementation, and collaboration, coordination with other groups. So the first component of the framework would be a SWOT analysis, just analysis to understand and assess the city's current economic landscape and identify areas of improvement. Many things have changed since COVID and we'd like to know up to date what's going on now in our local city. Two would be, second component would be the alignment of economic development goals. We would want the ED work plan to align with the 2040 general plan goals related to economic development, with emphasis on diversifying the economic base and identifying new revenue opportunities, and developing a strategic plan for sustainable economic growth and setting measurable objectives and deliverables to monitor our progress. The third component is revenue generation and tax base expansion. This would include identifying underutilized sites within our 10 study areas in the general plan to look at for possible mixed-use or hotel development, assess the city's real estate to ensure that we're getting appropriate levels of revenue and maximizing our revenues, advancing the new general plan, downtown plan, sorry, advancing a new downtown plan, and engaging with stakeholders to identify opportunities for increased tax generation. Under implementation, we're continuing with our efforts to support existing commercial and office users to help them through our planning application process, and then coordinating interdepartmental resources to support our small businesses and commercial office tenants when they need a tenant improvement. Component number five is business attraction retention. Under this component would be strategies that would attract and retain businesses, establishing small business support programs to help with minority-owned businesses, explore wayfinding signage for business districts and associated parking areas, retain a retail consultant to support the development of retail in mixed-use projects, and again, continue with our business engagement program. Component number six is economic development tools and resources. This would be, this would include things like updating the city's economic development webpage, evaluating ways to increase our visibility of our city initiatives through a campaign, and creating a quarterly
Okay, we are back and we're moving on to item number two, study session, economic development plan framework. Jennifer Chen, our economic development manager, will be leading us through it. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As mentioned, I am Jennifer Chen, the city's economic development manager. Tonight, we are here to review the framework and key components of a comprehensive economic development work plan. Following staff's presentation, I'd like to ask for your input on the following questions. Does the City Council support the focus area that will shape the work plan as described in the City Council report? Are there other areas of focus that the City Council would like to consider for inclusion in the work plan? Okay, thank you, sorry about that. Okay. Sorry about that. And the two questions that council, I would like the council to respond to would be, does the City Council support the focus area that will shape the work plan as described in the City Council report? And are there other areas of focus that the City Council would like to consider for inclusion in the work plan? As you know, the city is currently experiencing a 10.5 million general fund budget deficit. The reasons for deficit are changes in the national shift of the economic landscape, like remote work impacting things like dry cleaners, restaurants, and business travel, a loss of our vehicle license fee due to the state withholding of the local fees to offset the state budget shortfalls, and then the recent loss of the Marriott Hotel closure, creating a loss, a large loss of the local sales tax revenue. To tackle these issues, staff is preparing a comprehensive economic development plan to help meet the following objectives: diversification of the tax base, attracting and retaining businesses, supporting sustainable economic growth. I want to mention here that the ED work plan is not a magic bullet that will solve the city's, all the city's revenue issues. It's part of many efforts the city is undertaking to sustain services and ensure long-term financial solvency. If approved, the resulting economic development work plan will support small business, build relationships with new and existing businesses, enhance the economic vitality in the business district citywide, and stay abreast of local, state, and national real estate trends. The proposed framework has nine components, generally categorized into analysis, implementation, and collaboration, coordination with other components, with other groups. So the first component of the framework would be a SWOT analysis, just analysis to understand and assess the city's current economic landscape and identify areas of improvement. Many things have changed since COVID and we'd like to know up to date what's going on now in our local city. Two would be, second component would be the alignment of economic development goals. We would want the ED work plan to align with the 2040 general plan goals related to economic development, with emphasis on diversifying the economic base and identifying new revenue opportunities, and developing a strategic plan for sustainable economic growth and setting measurable objectives and deliverables to monitor our progress. The third component is revenue generation and tax base expansion. This would include identifying underutilized sites within our 10 study areas in the general plan to look at for possible mixed use or hotel development, assess the city's real estate to ensure that we're getting appropriate levels of revenue and maximizing our revenues, advancing the new general plan, plan, downtown plan, sorry, advancing a new downtown plan, and engaging with stakeholders to identify opportunities for increased tax generation. Under implementation, we're continuing with our efforts to support existing commercial and office users to help them through our planning application process, and then coordinating interdepartmental resources to support our small businesses and commercial office tenants when they need a tenant improvement. Component number five is business attraction retention. Under this component would be strategies that would attract and retain businesses, establishing small business support programs to help with minority-owned businesses, explore wayfinding signage for business districts and associated parking areas, retain a retail consultant to support the development of retail in mixed-use projects, and again, continue with our business engagement program. Component number six is economic development tools and resources. This would be, this would include things like updating the city's economic development webpage, evaluating ways to increase our visibility of our city initiatives through campaign, and creating a quarterly city newsletter update just for businesses. Component seven is a workforce and transportation initiatives, workforce housing and transportation initiatives. This would include collaborating with our housing manager and holding community stakeholder meetings to address issues like workforce housing, and working with the transportation staff to look at last mile opportunities and connections. Item number eight would be workforce development, and this would include completing a landscape analysis of all the workforce programs in San Mateo and regionally, collecting community input on the development of a workforce program, and then of course, leveraging and expanding existing workforce development efforts with NOVA, Job Train, and similar programs. And last but not least, on the component number nine, is creating a safe, healthy, and vibrant business district. This would include the things that the police department is already, would, I would like to invite the chief to talk about item number nine. Sorry.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to assist. We, as a police department, recognize our role in maintaining and enhancing a warm and safe environment for those patronizing San Mateo businesses. As you can see on your screen, we do have four dedicated full-time police officer positions in the downtown area. They work out of a substation located in downtown, and they work in conjunction with our homeless outreach team and our mental health clinician to address problems specific to the downtown corridor. We're also in the process of establishing a second substation with regard to business at the Hillsdale Shopping Mall in advance of the holiday season, which we think will be, which will make that environment safer and much more productive. We will soon have a business watch program established. It's modeled after a neighborhood watch program that brings businesses together and allows them to communicate with one another and the police department in an effective manner. It's a web-based program where the last piece we have that we're waiting on is just to get that website up and running, and then that will be, that will be operational. We continue to manage and administer a grant-funded organized retail theft prevention task force. We do that in conjunction with two other cities who share some of the same challenges we do in Daly City and San Bruno. And then, it's not just the downtown area. Our, we have challenges at Bridgepoint, 25th Avenue. There are several business areas in the, in the city that we're aware of, and we have a regular presence and work closely with merchants and business owners there. We're also looking to leverage technology to be able to do a little bit more with the same number of personnel that we have now. Thank you.
So those are the nine components, and I will talk a little bit about the next steps to this. So the next steps would be, if council approves this framework, we would take this framework to our business stakeholders to get some stakeholder feedback on the work plan in late 2024, early 25. In spring of 25, I would come back with a draft of an economic development work plan for City Council feedback and further direction. And summer of 25, we would finalize and adopt an economic development work plan. And then we'll use this work plan for two years, from 2025 to 2027, for implementation and progress tracking, to make sure that what we started is working and to make any adjustments if necessary. So then, let's go towards the council questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Who would like to start us off? Excuse me, before anything else, is there any public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one request to speak in council chambers and no requests through Zoom, so per council adopted rules and procedures, that will be three minutes per speaker. So our first speaker will be Erica Wood.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash, council members and staff. My name is Erica Wood, and I'm the CEO of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to speak on this topic, and I really want to thank Jennifer and Christina and Alex for their leadership in bringing this item forward, which I fully support. I have to contain my excitement. In addition to my work at the chamber, some of you know that I've had the opportunity to lead and support economic and community development activities over on the coast in Half Moon Bay. And I've really seen the positive things that can happen with an economic development plan like the one we're talking about tonight, from job creation, increased small business support, expanded higher education and workforce development opportunities, just to name a few. So while I know we're early stage in this particular process, I did want to offer a few comments for consideration as this work plan is developed. The first is that we define business broadly, and that that is inclusive of for-profit and nonprofit entities. The second is the importance of engaging a variety of stakeholders, partners, and collaborators at strategic points in the process, because economic development touches on a range of issues. And third, I'd want to make sure coming out of this effort that we have the strategic communications and tools to really be loud and proud about what makes San Mateo so great to invest and do business. So last but certainly not least, I want you all to know that the chamber stands at the ready to be a champion and supporter of this work. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, there's no further request to speak on this item.
All right, thank you. I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. Councilmember Hedges.
Yes, I'm happy to see the chamber here. One of my comments was going to be that we really need to work hand in glove with the chamber on this, because they have the experience and the business to help us make this policy work. You know, just some little things that I had ideas of. Maybe, you know, we had the new gaming business at Bridgepoint. Maybe when you click on the website, we have a little thing that pops up that says, there's a new business in town, and let people know it's here. It doesn't have to be saying rah rah, go there, it just lets people know that it's there, so we're not advertising. I think that we should invite people that have a new business to come here and speak, City Council. Tell us about their business. And occasionally, an older business that's been here for a long time, honor them for being in the city. As far as shifting the tax base, I don't think there's very far to shift. We get 15.3% of the property tax, we get 1% of the sales tax, and correct me if I'm ever wrong with anything I'm saying, 1% of the sales tax with the add-ons that we've done through some of the measures we've done, and the TOT tax, and we're not a destination location, but a business location. So I think our one thing that we can do is generate more and more people coming here and spending money, is, which I think this is intended to do. So, you know, and I would engage maybe the chamber in saying, when we have a new business, like the Game Zone, maybe we do a little thing like $100 worth of free gaming, have a raffle, or have people, a contest to get it, to make the people know that we have these businesses here. And the mayor brought up a very good point at the ribbon cutting. She said that we'd like to see you downtown, once you get your, because that would really bring a lot of young people downtown. So getting businesses that are already here to expand, I think that's some of the places I would go. And I think I'll wait to answer the questions until I've heard everybody, so I know their feelings as well.
I'm done.
Thank you, through the mayor. Thank you, Jennifer, for your presentation. I had a few questions. So I have a few questions asking for a sense of what the nine bullets could entail and include, so that I, that will help me answer a question about whether there are other areas of focus. They may be already in there. So with that in mind, could this plan include exploration into cost-sharing partnerships with business or commercial districts for city services? When I looked at the, some information on transportation improvements in the boards, I thought of the city of South San Francisco, which recently seemed to come to something of an agreement with a number of businesses on the east side of 101, to negotiate extra public works maintenance services that are needed in that area for, you know, something of a shared contribution or cost-sharing agreement. So just curious if that's something that's on the table at this point.
Yeah, I would think that it could be explored under item seven, the workforce housing and transportation initiative, and that it would likely also be explored through the general plan process with the, with the CDD bringing forward a community benefits program.
Very good. And then, could that potentially expand a little bit more into services other than transportation, for example, even police service and staffing?
Under police services, I rather, I think the police department should talk about that.
Good evening again. Yeah, from a police department perspective, we're obviously not in the business of charging for services. However, we do consider ourselves to be part of city infrastructure, and so if there are, if there is development efforts within the city that will require greater infrastructure, we would be interested in an investment in that, not just from a personnel perspective, but in today's world, from a technology perspective. Technology is helping us more and more each day. Obviously, our most valuable resource is people, but that's not always feasible. So we'd be, we'd be interested in, we would be willing to discuss any option regarding a cost-sharing proposition that makes us more effective and increases our capacity.
Thank you. I had a question about, I wanted to dig a little into the support for existing small businesses and opportunities, particularly within the 10 general plan study areas. I've been thinking about this a lot, given we have a ballot measure and in speaking with a number of businesses, some are concerned about what the future may hold, of course. I imagine if more development occurs in these areas, I wonder if this plan could explore support for those businesses that currently exist there. Perhaps, you know, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, something like tenant protections was something I heard in a session that we attended at Housing Leadership Day. But, but, you know, effectively, helping existing businesses manage a changing economic reality within these study areas.
Right. I think it would be explored as part of item two, alignment of the economic development goals with the general plan initiative. It would look at ways to reduce retail displacement due to redevelopment of projects, and there's a lot of different ways that businesses might be deciding to close, if they decide to close, or just change their business. So again, this would be something we would probably work with CDD on.
I think when you just really look at future redevelopment opportunities, there's a lot of discussion and community engagement in advance that we asked developers to do, specifically with the community and also with the current tenants at the same time, and seeing if there's opportunities to re-lease the spaces that were previously occupied by those small businesses into the new building. You'll see that in a number of cities up and down this peninsula, that you'll see, you know, businesses that have been there 30, 40, 50 years, and they might have long-term leases. Rather than buy out the lease, what they'll do is give them some financial consideration during the construction as they're displaced, but then also find a spot for them to get right back into the building itself. Now, that typically is a private party transaction that happens, but the city can, you know, really be vocal about what its priorities are, and really the retail businesses that were there and potentially could be displaced. I don't know if our community development director has anything else to add to what I just stated, but Zach, do you have any other thoughts on that?
Yes, just kind of reinforcing, this was definitely an act of discussion as part of the general plan, and we do have two specific actions that look at, one, how we support small businesses, and then, two, looking at the topic of commercial displacement, because that is definitely a factor as we go into the redevelopment that's potentially could occur throughout our 10 study areas. So yes, our land use element and the economic development section definitely looks into that, and I could see that more work happening there as we move forward with our code amendments and implementation.
Thank you. And I was curious about whether this plan could explore facilitation and support for smaller business districts in our city that don't yet exist but could in the future. In my district, for example, just off the top of my head, I was thinking about 25th Avenue, of course, but also potentially 37th Avenue, the Olympic Village, Crystal Springs Shopping Center. I'm a little curious as to like, how small is too small? But that might be too into the weeds tonight, but is this something we can explore with this plan?
Definitely. As mentioned, that staff will be continuing with our, I see that's part of our business engagement program. We already do reach out to businesses on 37th and on 17th, but just sort of like having a roster of businesses and knowing, talking to them more regularly, and expanding the efforts that we've done already in downtown, but just making it citywide.
Thank you. I think I'll, I'll ask one more question, which is related to a comment that council member Hedges made, just to make sure. But how do you see the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce and/or the DSMA partnering us, with us on this work?
Sure. I would, first, downtown association is limited based on their budget where they can focus on. So the downtown association can only work on the boundaries within the downtown area, because all the businesses are paying into McKenzie, the executive director's funding, and she can only promote businesses in the downtown and work on special events in the downtown. The chamber, however, has a much bigger scope in the city and can work throughout the city on different initiatives to support us in our plan. And kind of, I've already worked with the chamber on doing things like decorating 25th Avenue for the holidays. I've kind of worked the chamber in the downtown association to make sure they have a small business Saturday event happening. So I would say that we would definitely work very closely, but the downtown association can only work on the plan as it's related to the downtown.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
I would say that in, just kind of holistically, probably the 80,000-foot view, we'll be looking, we have an annual agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, and we can look at that as an opportunity to really look at some of these initiatives that, if council wants to move forward on, how we can align and work collaboratively in partnership, lockstep with our chamber, to really meet those goals. And so, you know, we're limited on the amount of staff and resources we have in economic development, every city is, but in order to be able to utilize the chamber as added, I'd say, added capacity, that'll be something that we would want to investigate further with moving this plan forward.
Thank you. At this time, I think I'll just go to comments to try to be useful with my speaking time and mention that, yes, I, as part of the City Council, do support the focus areas at this time. I believe most of the areas of focus that came to my mind, as answered by Ms. Chen, appear to be within the scope currently presented. So I am, I am comfortable and appreciative of the work done to date, particularly the interdepartmental nature of it, because that's, that's important. And, and I think as we look at these larger interrelated issues the general plan seeks to improve upon for our future, it's important for us to be working together. And so I appreciate the early days leaning into that. Of course, with particular resonance for me are, would be some of the questions I brought up. And in addition, I think, I hope there will be opportunities for workforce development to include some of what we just maybe saw in the Daily Journal about trade introductory or pre-apprenticeship Mateo for some time. And some of the support for some of these smaller business districts, I happened to go to 25th Avenue's trunk retreat event and spoke with a number of businesses. And I, you know, the opportunity to potentially improve our wayfinding signage for the district, especially its parking lot, there happens to be a parking lot that I think is a little hard to see. I saw it for the first time a couple of months ago. That might just be me, but it might just be, there might be other people who don't know. So if we're able to do that, a retail consultant sounds like a great idea. Going within the theme we've already discussed about making sure we're making the most out of our mixed-use opportunities and ensuring that some retail stays and that we're supporting our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee.
It's really exciting to see all of the thinking and deep consideration that's happening in this conversation. So I really appreciated, Jennifer, your thoroughness in the presentation and thinking, I think, really holistically about the opportunities, tying in housing, tying in transit, tying in an explicit equity lens, you know, and how we can align with our master plan, general plan. So I really appreciate the strategic efforts here and I'm very aligned with it. It's great to see our CEO in the house, Erica Wood. I would just echo that point about really maximizing the capacity of the Chamber of Commerce. In my vision of all, you know, of future iterations, I could see the city being more, more specific in our MOUs around strategic deliverables that we want to see codified in an MOU with the chamber. So not as far necessarily as like a fee-for-service, but something more clearly benchmarking what exactly, where we need support for implementation. Because like I always say to my council, we have a lot of beautiful plans sitting on the shelf without the funding. In this case, we actually have a significant amount of funding. I think it's like $70,000 a year going to the chamber, or what is it?
$90,000.
$90,000, thank you. It's like almost a quarter of the budget, right? And that's, you know, that's sustained funding source for a boots-on-the-ground approach that could really be in deeper collaborative partnership in bolstering the specific implementation capacity that I think we so need. Because I would love to clone you, Jennifer, but unfortunately, we're not there yet. AI has not advanced to that point. So we will have to rely on our partners like the chamber. And I think that it would be really great to, you know, to go through a proper MOU that's developed against the SWOT analysis and the implementation plan with clear timelines and deliverables as just a general practice that we do moving forward. Another thing that, you know, I'll just lift up the, you know, the point that I think this entire council is, you know, really concerned about the potential of displacement, especially of our BIPOC businesses and our small businesses in the, you know, what we hope will be a very welcoming city for development, right, and redevelopment, especially in our commercial districts, depending on the outcome of the next election. And I think that, I think that for me, I'm not clear about specifically the timeline and next steps. I still have, I, you know, and I would love to hear exactly, like, what are we promising? What are we, what are we saying that we're doing? What is in place and what is the timeline for policy development? I don't know the answers to those questions. I know that we have adopted a general plan that specifically addresses this concern, but a general plan that is not executed against is just, you know, is just a vision, right? And so I don't know legitimately, and I would like to hear tonight, if there is concrete timeline and steps that we're taking and that we can take as part of this conversation around anti-displacement measures for our small business community, and particularly our minority-owned, or let's not even use the word minority-owned, because right now in this county, we are majority-minority. We're talking about BIPOC small business owners that are at the highest risk of displacement. So that's an outstanding question for me.
So on that outstanding question, I think as we develop this plan, so we're going to go, you know, should the rest of the council agree with the plan? We're kind of on the path of doing engagement, and then we'll come back and put together what the formal plan would be. But then within that, we'll have kind of SMART goals so that it's time-bound and specific. And so if that's one of the priorities of this council, it would most likely, the work that we're going to do is in the next two years with that, if that's one of the action items that this council wants to move forward with.
Do I see nodding heads?
Of course.
Great.
I see all nodding heads here.
Wonderful. Okay.
Two years.
I love it. Okay. And then I also want to echo the various points that Erica Wood made about having a broad Big Ten definition of business to include nonprofits. And I think that actually a lot of our vacant commercial office space could be activated by nonprofits that are dire, in terms of like keeping up the cost of having operations here in the face of inflation and high rents in this area. And so I would love for us to create, you know, a flexible zoning ordinance that would welcome nonprofits in downtown, in ground-floor commercial spaces that can welcome people and deliver services directly on the ground floor. And I think, you know, I think that that might be, have to be the future of some of our retail space that's now vacant and underutilized and might not ever come back in the form of a store. So we need to work with like the new realities of today. And I think that, I think that the nonprofit sector can be a solution for us moving forward in activating our commercial districts, utilizing our commercial office space, and providing essential, wonderful services to our constituents. So I really hope that we can look in those directions as well.
And so that is something that we'll be looking at as part of our downtown plan when we look at the specific plan itself. It's something we've also heard from our retail brokers, just about what retail is looking like in the future. Some of them really pushed hard, saying, you got to put an urgent care facility downtown on the ground floor, something to look at. And don't know if our zoning code allows that right now, but that's something that we have to look at in the future.
Last I checked, we control our zoning code.
Yeah, that's correct, but we have to go through a process to get there.
Okay. I mean, these are, the codes are the things that are within our control to change. And if they're where the places where we're getting stuck, then we need to unstick them, right? It's up to us. No one's going to do that for us. So lastly, I, you know, two things, actually. I will say that I think that just a small, little, low-hanging fruit thing, idea for the folks here, I think it would be really great for us to have a webpage up on one of our webpages, one, our website, that actually has a comprehensive list of our city-owned land and our opportunity sites. I think that that needs to be like straight-up inaccessible to everyone, because, because we shouldn't have to dig for it. And this is the time to get that kind of stuff front and center and accessible. And it shouldn't, you know, I hope that's not a huge lift. And then, lastly, and I don't want to leave on like a down note in terms of my comments, but I, I am still reeling from that wave of predatory litigation that happened across the county. So San Mateo is not unique in the ways that this happened in our city. But I felt we were very unprepared. And I would like, I would like us to think about where we can support from like a shared legal, you know, agreement, or, you know, I, you know, legal services pooled fund, or you know, something that, you know, will provide our small businesses a, you know, relief when they're being, you know, when they're being sued for like a ramp that's, you know, a quarter of an inch off, right? You know, businesses were being targeted and paying, you know, $10,000 a pop. Some of our businesses were sued twice in the span of two years. And so I will, you know, I know that our, we're making great strides in being more ADA accessible. I know that there's a lot of work that's, that has taken place in terms of education and support to some of those businesses. But, you know, those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of situations that for me reveal that we were being reactive instead of proactive, right? And that if we had developed infrastructure and pleased to help at least some of the businesses coordinate with each other and to share knowledge and support and resources, that we, that they would have been better off. And it would have been the kind of service level that we strive for. And so, you know, in, if we recognize that this is a very litigious world that we live in and country, right? And that our small businesses are particularly vulnerable, like this is when we're doing our SWOT analysis, that we recognize that predatory litigation is a reality that businesses have to confront. That should be also something that we look to in terms of bolstering our own infrastructure and capacity to support businesses in navigating that fact. So I just want to make sure that we learn from those lessons, that we don't pretend like, you know, this is never going to happen again. Sadly, sadly, this is, this is the world we live in. And I would like San Mateo to be on the forefront of solutions and on the forefront of business support when we are in those kinds of legal crises. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
Well, I'll start out with the first council question. Does city council support the focus areas that will shape the work plan as described in the city council report? My answer is yes. I think you've done a great presentation, and I appreciate it. To address the second one, I'm going to kind of tie in some of my questions, if that's okay. One of the questions that I've talked about with our city manager is that I'd like to see if it's possible to identify things that we might be lacking in certain neighborhoods and parts of the city. I think the term is a leakage study. I'm not sure if that's right, but for example, in my own neighborhood, you know, we had a huge pharmacy. We don't anymore. And, you know, you have to go a distance to get to get to a pharmacy. You know, I've heard about urgent care, the request for wanting urgent care downtown. Is that a thing? I've heard people, now we're coming into the holidays, say, how can we be as big a city as we are and we don't have a toy store anymore? And so, you know, I'd like to see if that's something that we could do as part of our planning, is to look at the city strategically and figure out, are there, are there things that we don't have that we should? And if so, can we help, you know, identify and try to find companies to fill those gaps? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, there wasn't a question there. Second thing was, you know, I very much appreciate all the things that the Chamber of Commerce does, but I think in conjunction with the city, I would like us to do, continue to do support for small businesses. Part of, which was a great thing that happened this past year, was the Best of San Mateo, is, you know, we identified a ton of companies that were not on the chamber's radar. And I'd really like to see if we could identify the businesses that are not members of the chamber and try to get them, you know, that first year to get active, activated. I'd also like to see if we could see that some of these smaller businesses that aren't necessarily using economic development opportunities that are available to them, you know, try to broaden that scope. Does that make sense?
I don't quite understand your last one. What do you mean by broaden the scope for small businesses?
Just making them know that we are available for them and what things we can be providing. And I think, I think part of that is, is really looking at, okay, let's look at all the businesses in the city of San Mateo, and which ones are members of the chamber or which are not. And let's target the ones that are not to try to get them activated and know that, you know, there are things that are available to them that they might not be utilizing.
So then you're asking for city staff to support new members for the chamber? Is that a direct ask?
No. I think I'm more saying I'd like to try to identify the businesses that are not chamber members and maybe, you know, there's a lot of businesses, I'll use an example. A friend of my family are CPAs. They, they're a four-person CPA practice in San Mateo, and they've been in San Mateo for 40 years. And I convinced them to, hey, you should say, you know, sign up for the best CPA. And they came in like third place, which was great. They also became, I think, I haven't followed up with this, but they became Chamber, Chamber of Commerce members for the first time in 40 years. So my point is, is like, there's a lot of businesses that we just want to get engaged. You know, also, that puts them on the radar to get our quarterly newsletter. It gets them activated. And that's what I'm trying to push.
Right. And I think I just want to draw a line between like what I can do and bring the businesses and introduce them to the chamber, but it would be up to the business themselves if they want to become a chamber member.
Of course.
And there could be other chambers that a business may want to join. I just, that's why I was asking that and clarifying.
Just really what I'm hearing from the deputy mayor is that you want to get our businesses into the community fold and activated, period, just in the city, whether it be with the chamber, whether it be with the city, just get activated and engaged.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for recapping, yes. I'll keep moving. Okay. Cover that already. Couple other small things. I would be definitely in support of hiring a retail consultant, especially for mixed use. We still have quite a few buildings that have open mixed-use space, and I'd like to see if we could try to find people to fill those spaces. Something I thought about when you were speaking was, what is the definition of downtown? Meaning, is the eastern perimeter of downtown currently considered the railroad tracks? Because it's definitely encroaching further east now, and I'm wondering if those merchants that are just a little bit east of the railroad tracks are at some point going to be considered downtown. And I know that's not something you might be able to answer now, but just something to kind of noodle on.
So what I was referring to is that the DSMA currently collects a specific boundary that participates into the Business Improvement District. So Mackenzie, the executive director they hired can only work in that area. That district, I think, might align with our, what our zoning downtown is, but it might be a little bit smaller.
And just understanding that, you know, there's new development, there's new areas of activity and different nodes, I think is part of our downtown specific plan. That'll be a question for this council to really determine, what is the boundaries of the new downtown that you guys are envisioning as a council?
Yep. That's exactly where I'm saying. Thank you. And last thing, just kind of a side note, I sit on the JPA for commute.org. They're always looking for, and we should definitely be continuing to partner with them for businesses that need last-mile shuttles. So I know that you have workforce housing and part of that is transit for last mile. And I would encourage you to make sure that we're talking to them or including with them, because we already are part of their JPA. And that is all my questions and comments. And that is all my questions and comments. Thank you so much, Jennifer.
All right. I think Councilmember Lee has a comment.
Thank you for coming back to me. So I knew I didn't want to end on litigation. I actually wanted to highlight something, a love I think that we all share here on this council, which is the cultural arts and music sector. And that, to me, is really undernourished in our city. You know, I was talking to a new Samontan and she, you know, she was asking like, oh, you know, are there any galleries or like, where can I see some art in San Mateo? I was like, you know, there's like galleries in the cafes, but we don't really have, you know? We don't have a destination museum. We don't have a lot of music venues. I was, you know, I was kind of saddened to see some curbs put on the music program at the Beachhead Deli because of noise restrictions. And I think that, you know, I think that we need to have areas in our commercial districts that are music-friendly. Like, let's turn it up and cut loose. Like, there needs to be some fun places to go after nine o'clock, right? This is eight o'clock. Yeah, like, can we be out after eight? That is, you know, that's how we activate space here. That's how we bring a base of customers around, you know, not necessarily around the clock, but past 8:00 PM is to have, you know, have some destination experiences. And that, to me, is a huge opportunity that I think we're kind of squandering or sleeping on or suppressing because of unresolved issues, again, with the zoning code and the noise ordinance issues. And they're just not thinking through like where we need these businesses to locate that makes sense, you know? So I really hope that that can be part of our conversation and exploration as well. Because there are so many talented musicians and I'll tell you, I have two good friends that just debuted, like, this is my dear friends, very talented musicians. They just debuted their bands, both of them in Redwood City. Not one in their own city where they're raising their kids, right? There was not one destination that made sense for them to debut their bands. And that's a shame. And that says a lot about where, you know, where we're missing the mark. So I will, I'll end on that note.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Hedges, briefly, you had one more comment.
Yes, I'd reserve some of the things I was going to say so I could listen to everyone else. And I think that's been beneficial. So first of all, I want to thank you. I know you've gone a long ways with the Downtown Association, especially and with the chamber and doing the events downtown. It's actually changed my attitude on whether we close or open up First Street. I think it's, I think because of what you're doing, it's actually generated understanding of businesses there. It's been a really good thing and I really like the way it's going now. And I credit you and the chamber and the Downtown Association working together on that. And that's the way we get things done. I think I can count on you to take advantage of opportunities as they pop up and we have to be alert for those. And I know you'll do a good job on that. I want to agree with Councilwoman Lee because I think there is space for downtown and for nonprofits. And something that occurred when the office surge got underway and some of the downtown spaces were rented for office, I don't know whether people remember that, but there was discussion on the city council, I'm not sure it got enacted, but it was on the way to get enacted, to allow offices to take some of the space that wasn't used in the back of the retail. And we could do some of that for the nonprofits. So, you know, sometimes history repeats itself, but not for the same thing. So that's one of the things we could do. There is an urgent care facility downtown. Mills, unless they've closed it, has a fairly large one downtown on Second Street. And I thank Councilmember Lorraine for bringing up the trades program. Building trades have been doing this a long time, especially with the community colleges. When I was in high school, back in the old days, every school had a trades program and not just talking about it. We were doing hands-on work. I could read blueprints when I walked on the job. Nobody had to train me how to lay out the equipment. I learned that in high school. And we have a lot of people like myself who had urgent family matters that aren't going to go to college and they need to be able to make a middle-class living. And I think bringing the building trades in this as well as the chamber would be a very good idea. Because they can, they can actually take you through their schools and show you what they do. And they're amazing. And many of them are in this area. I don't know whether it was completed by electricians. They're trying to buy a building in Los Prados to bring their school here to San Mateo. And I feel the same about music. And just let me tell you what, my home away from home in Hilo, Hawaii, some people rented an old house downtown, put a second floor balcony on the main room, and they invited people to come in and play music on Monday night for blues and jazz. And people that didn't know each other before that night would come together and play music and you couldn't hardly get into the place. People were packed. So maybe we experiment with something like that downtown, where we find a space. And I know there's a space on Second Street where an old tailor used to be because it's been empty since he retired, right across from Mills. So, and I think, I'm not sure it was that space. We're on Second Street. We had a comedy club before the pandemic that would plan on going in and then when the pandemic hit, they backed off. So we can try things. You know, sometimes if we have an empty space, it doesn't cost a lot just to try it. So, and to answer your questions, yes, I do support where you're headed with the focus. And those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I think you're getting unanimous yes to the first question. Absolutely. This is, this is so important, something we've been talking about for a while. And I agree with just about every comment that's been made up and ideas. What I'd love to really emphasize is that this effort needs to take a step up and not just be, oh, we can do this here, we can do this there. What's the strategic vision? And I know you've got to go through the SWOT analysis and all that, but out of that, what do we want to be, you know, as a city, as an economic center? As, do we want to be the entertainment center of the Peninsula, as Councilmember Lee brought up? Or do we want to be the financial and health, you know, headquarters of where we are? I mean, there are all these questions, but we need to understand, before we go doing all the tactical programs, what is it we want to be? I think we've all decided as part of the general plan that we're not going to be the retail hub because there isn't going to be a retail hub. But should we be the entertainment center or should we be something else? Or how do they work together? And I think we've got to put a lot of emphasis on that and keep coming back to it so that it is clear. And when we go and talk to other, you know, other groups, like we've been talking a lot about small business here, we need to be talking about big business. We need to be talking about nonprofits, as was mentioned. How do we segment our strategies in development? We can't have a one-size-fits-all, as I know you know, but I think we need to make it very, very clear. And how does that come together? Certainly, everything we've said about leveraging the chamber and the DSMA is critical and I agree with Councilmember Lee's desire to have a very focused, you know, what is it that the chamber is going to be doing? How are we going to be looking to the chamber to lead? And how are we looking to DSMA to lead? And what other groups need to get involved? Let's be specific and let's monitor it on a regular annual basis, you know, just like any other business plan. You know, I think the discussion of really looking at where, as part of that, where are the areas we want to have business centers? Obviously downtown, obviously 25th, but where are the other ones? You know, what's going on as we develop other parts of our city? And how do we make sure that this plan brings to life what we've been talking about, wanting to have neighborhood villages? Those neighborhood villages need to have business. They need to have economic vitality that's not just a coffee shop. But how do we pull that all together? You know, I think Wayfair signage, which is sort of a off-the-strategy sign, but is so important as part of the overall branding. And this goes back to where I come from. But as part of this plan, what should come out of it is, who are we as a city? And what does that mean from a branding perspective? And then how does that translate into Wayfair signage? How does that translate into the downtown specific plan? How does that translate into everything we do? And completely agree with the broad definition of business and segmenting strategies, as I've mentioned. I love what the chief talked about in terms of the importance of our police department and our fire as core partners in this. Because if businesses don't feel that they're operating in a safe environment, they just, they're, that's the end of it, you know? And I think that the idea of a business watch program is a really great idea, too. And I'd love to know whether that's, is that just a county area? Is that something that has been done in other parts of the country? Are you paving new ways by doing this?
A little bit of both.
Well, I think that's great. I mean, that would be part of, let's put it out there. And San Mateo is leading the way with this. So San Mateo is leading the way in all these other things. And then obviously, looking at forecasting trends, and I think a number of my colleagues have said, we've got to keep ourselves open in seeing what's going on. But how do we work with forecasting organizations? People are looking at the future, not just five years, but the next 20 years. And how do we have to be ready for that? And then finally, communication, communication, communication has to be a huge part of this. And how do we develop it? Who do we communicate with? How do we, we have so many wonderful things about this city that nobody knows the first thing about, or programs that are going on or will go on. So how do we make sure that we address all that? And it's being dealt with in other ways, too, but it needs to be part of this plan. So congratulations, you've got a lot of work, you and the chamber and the DSMA and our partners. Nonprofits, obviously a part, a very critical part of who our city is. But I'm excited to see what's going on with this and get going as quickly as you can. So there we go. Any other, okay, well, I guess we are done then. Have you gotten everything you need, Jennifer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then thank you. Then I think we can wrap it up and give us all 10, you need 15 minutes? Yeah, okay, great. So 15 minutes, off we go.